Okay, I am calling the meeting to order at 6:33 PM. Let's see. Terry Warner.
Here.
And Matthew McGovern.
Here.
Maury.
Here.
See how I did that? Mike McLeod.
Here.
And Sam Houston-Clinton.
Here.
Alright, let's do the public.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic with which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The Texas flag?
Honor the Texas flag, a flag of allegiance to the essence, one state, under God, one and individual.
Alright.
Hey, real quick, Mayor, I guess it was a typo. We had, thought we were gonna go back to the regular three minutes. We never changed it for like...
It does say three minutes.
Yeah, I thought we changed it.
Each speaker is up to three minutes per event.
No, it says for islands only you may speak after city council discussion and before any vote. That was not what we agreed upon. It was, the old way was three minutes, uh, public comment before we started meeting. Yeah, of course, if somebody wants to raise their hand, you have the prerogative to take their, take their request.
Okay. Public comment number one, Catherine Peterson.
Uh, my name's Dan.
My name's Katie.
Okay. Um, I am eleven years old and I'm starting sixth grade this year. I have been going to this amazing libraries themselves too. I have loved the activity there, for example Lego club and story times. I have read so many books from the library. Some of my favorites are City Spies and Percy Jackson, The Olympians. These books helped, um, we won an award for reading two million words and I got a high score in English. My little brother and my cousin come with me too. We need your help. One reason we need your help is because we need money for books and supplies. The library is important to me, my family, and the community. Please support the Martin Dale Community Library.
Thank you.
It's over.
You did great.
Okay, so kiss, then move your paper.
Okay.
So kiss and move your paper. I hope you don't, I hope you don't mind if we leave.
Uh, Ernest Painter. That's hard to follow, Ernest.
The, uh, I just wanted to say tonight is a big time of day about the time of year and city's struggling with its budgets and starting to prepare things for end of September. You have to have it done by the last day of September and prove. And I wanted to talk to you a little bit about the budget. Property taxes in Martindale, I got these numbers from the appraisal district. These are easy to get. The total property taxes in Martindale is three hundred ninety-six thousand, three hundred ninety-two dollars and ninety-two cents. Hobson Ranch, my neighborhood, across the highway, pays fifty-nine thousand, seven hundred thirty-two dollars and ninety-three cents. Butterfly Meadows next door is sixty, a little bit more than that, sixty-seven thousand, two fifty-two, fifty-two. That's thirty-two percent of the property tax budget comes out of those two neighborhoods. I've lived there fourteen years coming this December. And we get nothing from the city other than police protection driving by. And once a year, it's only last fall with pothole, making bump instead of pothole. Couple of months ago, we had a fire over there that could have cost a man his house, Freddie Duran Jr. He lost his truck, he lost his RV, and had it been parked a little bit closer to his house, he would have lost his house. The neighbor lost his fans and he could have lost his house. We're strapped here with a volunteer fire department and they're doing the best they can do. I'm certainly not here criticizing all their fire department. But we don't have fire hydrants. We have one fire hydrant that the water company put in a couple of years ago. Steve told me we're gonna put in three, two this year, one next year. Never happened, forgot one. We pay thirty-two percent of the property taxes in the city. We don't even have a street light over there that the city pays for. All those street lights, they're not street lights, they're yard lights. Mine happened to be facing that on the street and I paid for that, that's okay. But we getting nothing. And we're kinda getting tired of that, we are tired of that. I'm gonna ask you tonight to look at putting three fire hydrants in Hobson Ranch out of this budget. That's less than half of what we pay one year. And then we'll have it done. We really need five, but we could use three, maybe we can get along some of the water company. In the years past, the city says, well, those are water company lines, they're not ours. No, they're not. But I guarantee you, if you said, hey, we'll put fire hydrants over there, the water company will say, you betcha, you didn't do that. And they might even step up and put another one with you. This is a safety matter. The number one purpose of a city government collecting taxes is the resident's safety. It's not for parks, it's not for libraries, I don't make anybody mad. If we spend enough money on the library, we need to start putting, spending some money on the infrastructure. Our streets are falling apart, we don't have fire hydrants, we don't have street lights. Forget the street lights, we got to have some fire hydrants. Those two neighbors, if they know to get out of the city, and I'm not threatening that, please don't take this wrong. But if we don't get something soon, we will petition the city to get us out. And I believe the next time it will pass. You lose thirty-two percent of your property taxes, you might as well just close all these doors. It's over. We all enjoy the city, we wanna be here, we wanna be part of the city, but we're not part of the city over there. You drive over there, which I doubt, do you have, you'll see that there are stop signs that are gone. We had a speed limit sign hanging upside down for nine months until it finally fell off. I guess some kid got it down in his bedroom, hanging on the wall. We don't have, things like that, just small things. Nothing has been done over there in fourteen years, nothing. All the neighborhood watch signs over there, I personally paid for it and put up myself. I personally put the poles in the ground up there on. I personally put the poles in the ground up, the speed limit signs are on. And I paid for the speed limit signs. I'm not gonna do it again. I pay taxes, all my neighbors pay taxes. I'm here representing Hobson Ranch and Butterfly Meadows, representing the whole neighborhood. If you want to petition with every person's name over there on it, I'll get you one. But I guarantee you, every single person over there will be happy to sign that petition. This room is not big enough for them. But we need the fire hydrants and I'm requesting tonight, you put the three fire hydrants in the budget this year. I'll even go a step further. I own this commercial construction company for almost thirty years before I retired and moved to Martindale. I'll be happy to work with the mayor, the mayor of Fontaine, the water company, to get bids, to figure out the placement, whatever we can do. But the city needs to step up and give us some of our tax money back in the way of fire hydrants. That's all we're asking for. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Megan.
Robert Warren, whatever. Well, he's not here, so he's serving the community at another meeting, so I'm gonna try to read the CPA's statement. I don't claim to know all this stuff, but here's his words. If the concerns of the city council about the library are financial, we can focus on financials. The library receives funds from city council and from grants. As a whole, the library reports financial information to the IRS and statistical information to TSLAC, which is the Texas State Library Archives Commission. They hire a third-party professional accountant to maintain daily-day financial records. For the 2022 and 2023, the library has submitted all their required forms to the IRS, a 990 form, and TSLAC. And they have not received any deficiency notices from either agency. So the library is not being careless with their funds. But if the city council is concerned about... But if the city council is concerned, what are they concerned about? Is it the funds received from the city council? Those are accounted for by the librarians W2. Is it the funds from the grants? If that's the city council's concern, then maybe they need to be fully responsible for day-to-day operations. What the city council should be concerned about is that if the library does not receive city funding, then they lose accreditation. Losing accreditation and losing the grant money. A decision from the city council to end funding would completely end all services the library provides. Am I next? I can just take here. Yes, then I only got one chance. I can find my next name. Okay. So I had asked at a previous city council meeting why the city council was concerned with the finances of the Martindale Community Library. I was given a response from a councilperson that the library received money from the city, so they should be concerned how the money was managed. If that truly is the concern, then the city should only be concerned with the money allotted to the library by the city. The library has given funds to the city to pay for the library. Other funds obtained by grants and et cetera should not be a concern to the city. As a nonprofit, there are other entities that monitor the finances of the library. They have their own library board, they report to the IRS, they report to the TSLAC, which I referred to earlier. The city's contribution allows the library to retain their accreditation and allows them the eligibility to obtain grants that provide all the valuable community programs. In my experience, the library has been very fiscally responsible. They pay their rent, I know that seems like a normal thing, but it doesn't always happen. And they also pay the Carl family for the use of the hall, they're not taking any handouts. The concern that wakes me up in the middle of the night is that if the city is unable to pay the allotment to the library as they have done the past ten years, are the city's finances in order? As select elected officials to serve the city of Martindale, the city council have an obligation to the citizens to share why this distribution of funds this year is being questioned. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mary Beth.
I want to say thank you to the city for posting on the city's main webpage a comment about the Martindale Community Library's birthday, its tenth-year birthday. Okay, thank you, city. Okay, as far as library events, we had our fourth annual health event on this fair on June twenty-eighth. We had ten vendors and thirty-two vendors. Mrs. Flynn from a grant from the St. Vegas Foundation. Also tomorrow, at eleven AM, is coffee, conversation, and coloring. The coloring is a mental health aspect. Also, more after then from two to three, is any book, any book book club. So you can read any book and manage discussion book. And we have lots of people coming in. And our peer support specialist, George Guerrero, is in the library from eleven four on Thursdays and Fridays. He's a specialist in mental health issues. And this is funded from, via Hope, which is from St. Vegas Foundation. If anyone needs mental health counseling, call the library, make an appointment. And Martindale Police Department has referred some folks to them. Here, we still have our food pantry, stocked with food items as well as vitamins and hygiene items. Food donations are from the Caldwell County Food Bank and for policies. And Mr. McLeod has been asking for a change of commerce in the library. We recently purchased a big string TV that was from St. Vegas Funds. This will have a lot of mental health tips on it as well as library and city events. And it's already up and running over there. Okay, June nineteenth agenda, the previous council meeting, it was a motion to approve the contract between the city and Martindale Community Library. This was tabled so the council members could do the documents individually that the city had requested. Mr. McLeod was the one who requested this. And this past Monday, July the seventh, from nine to five, three council members came in. I was there all day long, three of them came in, Mr. McLeod not.
I was at the point.
So Mr. McGovern spoke with two other council members. It wasn't individually, he spoke. He admitted to going to our county to tell her she was wrong and to check some of our documents. He's not a CPA. He also had gone to our library's governing board, GSLAC, Texas State Library and Archives Commission, to tell them our documents were incorrect. The person at GSLAC informed me that our annual report is not an accounting document. They looked just to see if the library is receiving local government funding and hopefully we help get it off. Mr. McGovern was not appointed, but council to invest state of library's finances, its businesses, and private citizens. He spoke at last council meeting from behind his council member chair and to discuss our supposed discrepancies. Now, a suggestion, since he seems to have extra time to invest that library, was it, why didn't he drop through the city and try and override, override the steps and block the stop signs? And this agenda packet on pages seventeen, eighteen is a copy of last year's contract signed by the city as well as library board. Page nineteen is resolution approved by the council in November. Has errors throughout, it's been pointed out numerous times. He had plenty of time to correct those errors. It's kind of strange that, you know, the previous mayor produced this document, has all these errors, but then they come to us because we had some errors, the eight and six here. Then on page twenty, twenty-one is the contract the city council approved as far as our contract. And just how to ask the council its men. Other entities or businesses in Martindale did not have to provide such complete financial records. For example, the company that most don't do parks, the IT person, the janitor, the service provider, anybody that owned it on and off, they did not actually provide all the financials. There's another nonprofit in Martindale, for example, the Martindale Volunteer Fire Department, did not even file their IRAs for nine ninety for seven years. Not until they got a new new IRIs. And one council member has been saying that Martindale citizens can go to San Marcos, use their library. Okay, San Marcos charges fifty bucks a year for a library card. And La Pop Library also charges a fee from long distance. If the council does not put the library's contract, there'll be many children in Martindale who'll be affected. A young girl rode her bicycle to the library yesterday to enjoy Lego time. She basically backed with the Enjoy Goods and Crafts. They say their citizens enjoy our balance classes as well as the tax aid income tax program. Also, many citizens do not drive and it might get free use of the computers and printing in the library. Please vote yes to approve the library's contract. It's been seven months without city funding, seven months. Okay, here's an example, triple down there. Okay, the contract with the city allows for accreditation. And without accreditation, our E-Rate costs for the eight thousand dollars a year. Okay, E-Rate provides internet services. And with accreditation, we get a ninety percent discount, which is about seventy-eight bucks a month. E-Rate provides internet service. Also, accreditation allows the library to apply for large state and national grants. One of those is saving the children. And they've been doing the summer reading program. And also the arts and crafts back during the spring. Okay, GSLAC also provides free items for our summer reading, that's a state program. And please vote yes for our library contract.
Let's see. Hold on. No, my bad. There's one of the, Patricia Hunt. Patricia Hunt, um, I don't have access to her public comment. Um, she emailed it to council members. So, I don't have that, I don't have that. Does someone have it that they can read it? I have one that was sent to me.
Yeah, probably was. From Patricia Hunt?
Yeah, but it was just to me.
Yes, I sent each one individually.
Okay, you want me to read it?
Yes, please.
Go for it.
As a council member who by nature should support what is best for Martindale, I urge you to help fund the Martindale Library. It actively demonstrates what is best about our community. We have already lost a spectacular librarian, Ashley Guerrero, due to the council's failure to fund the library. Our library needs a certified librarian to be accredited so we can be eligible to apply for grants. Carol DeVini has earned grants for our library, which funds many of its activities. Our library encourages reading, community unity, technological skills, and healthy living along with fun and laughter, to name just a few of the reasons the council should fund the library. Please do not cause this town to lose what is best about it. Work with it, work with its staff and volunteers, please be partners with the library. Respectfully, Patricia Hunt.
Thank you.
Alright, and with that, if there's no other, is there anyone else that wanted to make public comments that didn't get an opportunity to do so? Okay, then we need to break for an executive session because we are paying not one, but two amazing attorneys to be here. That's a lot of money. So we can go ahead and do the executive session first so that we can let at least one of them go home soon. And then we'll invite everyone back in just as a reminder that the first executive session has to do with the Northwest River Road Grant and the acquisition of real property in order to make that grant happen. And the second session will be about individual council member authority under state law and ethics rules. And the first one, I believe Mr. McGovern has, if that's correct, he, he has recused himself from being part of that session because he's part of that grant, obviously. So, um, we'll just ask them to wait outside if you don't mind. And we'll do the session and then we'll invite everyone back in. No decisions are made during executive session. We just discuss the items that are like the prime client privilege, so. We shall return. Are we good? Alright, we're gavelled back in and... Let me ask you a question. What do we need to say when we go back from executive session, just that we're done, or do we say anything?
What, you, are we getting motions on the items that we're...
Are there any motions on the items that we need to address?
No.
Okay.
Well, is that, please say it. Okay, so you all, you all are not wanting to take any action on one point one?
Yeah, that's my question.
Because I kind of wondered if we need to do a motion on the contract? The, the contract for the, um...
For the purposes of discussion, I'll make a motion to, um, cancel acceptance of bids relating to the Northwest River Road project.
Any second?
Oh, sorry, sorry.
Yeah, after we have a second, then we can discuss it and vote. It doesn't mean that you're in favor of it or against it, we just need to have a second so we can have a conversation.
Do, can I have a question real quick, maybe for me?
Of course.
Do we have to, does that, does that have to be on the agenda as discussion action? Because the executive session doesn't indicate any action item afterwards. So. Because usually before it'd be discussion action and then the first item after would be potential discussion action based upon that discussion.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm, mm-hmm.
It's longer than a term.
When, because the Texas Historic Commission presented us with the letter telling us to pause everything at the last second, um, we already had published our agenda and that wasn't part of it because the way it had been originating was she was going to do today's thing and then next week, we went to determine our support or not support for eminent domain. So it was set up to be a two-week thing, but then this new development that Texas Historic Commission has asked us to pause any work on the road that involves the cemetery, we all of a sudden already had a public agenda. So I don't know where that leaves us.
Will we be allowed to vote on that? Ideally, it would be this is for action and for...
Okay, so just wait and do it next week?
Yeah, I think, I think that would be best.
When do the bids come in?
Monday.
Monday, but that's, I mean, you're just not gonna award them. Like, they, they could come in, you're not gonna open or award them, but... Either.
Are we allowed to speak to any of the vendors?
No, but I think Turk and Caitlin are there.
The engineers, the engineers are in here.
Okay, thank you.
So that's just until further notice anyway, so we can take action next week.
So, I guess officially no second motion fails. Yeah, so we, yeah, so, but it usually not the next.
Yeah, we'll put it for the next week.
Got it.
Okay, so then, moving on, our report on the Fourth of July was amazing and I'm so grateful to everybody that was here for it because we got off to such a slow start with the rain delays and whatnot. But then, people just weren't gonna have it, they came out and partied anyways. Chief is like calling me at nine going, they're out here anyways, you might as well come on down. Just tell people they're just gonna have a block party until the parade starts. And people did that and it seemed like everybody had a great time. And thank you to Terry for helping.
Oh, gosh, out in the rain, God bless you.
She brought students and they took everybody's names and made the list and then got that information over to headquarters where it could be announced over the speaker to the MC.
With dripping ink.
With dripping ink and they could read, but it was the, it was the work, it was the hustle that mattered. So thank you for doing that. Um, and thank you to the Martindale Police who were here for like two hundred hours in a row because then we had all that flooding thing happening and they had to keep checking the river. So they were here non-stop and I love them for that. Um, thank you to the Caldwell County Sheriff's who also had our back that same weekend. Um, the Martindale Volunteer Fire Department and CCESD number three, not number five. And Immaculate Heart of Mary was ama, was amazing because they let us use their parking lot at the last, like literally, chief called them like at five minutes before we got here and was like, we're not allowed to park on the grass because it's all wet and it's gonna tear up the grass, so what do we do? And they were like, just park in our lot, there's plenty of room. So, thank you to them. Thank you to all the vendors who stood in the rain and sold things. And I was so happy because they were selling things. Like there was a lady selling plants and she sold a lot of plants, I was so happy for her. Um, the Mariachis were a huge success. Um, and the Martindale marching band made their first ever appearance. I loved them, they were hot, they made me so happy.
They're on the front page of the Times.
They were so good, they were so good.
They only had one, they only had one practice.
Wow, really? They were so good, they were my favorite thing ever.
And they didn't stop, they went through the whole.
Yes, they did, and back around again.
Indu-its.
They were so good. Um, our DJ, who is from the Fiesta at Catholic Church, when they heard that we needed a DJ, calls were made and suddenly we had a DJ right here and he stood there with the rain and whatnot. Um, Mrs. Jane Latham and her family, because they had started the whole parade panache. And Joe Penali, because he left here right in the back of his truck. And then he's like, we didn't think about it, so we didn't put any signs on there that said, this is the mayor. And you were kind of down low, so I don't even know if people knew you ran the back of the truck.
That's fine.
I wait, I threw the lollipops to children. He kept talking about throwing lollipops at children and I'm throwing at children.
Four children.
No, we throw them to children, we don't throw them at children. So, thank you to everybody that participated, it was a lot of fun. And, um, we had a really good turnout, I thought, especially...
And people stayed for the second go-round.
They did, they stayed, even with the weather the way it was, so, good for us. Um, and now, uh, Chief. Chief has a special little event.
Let us know, like last year, it was scorching hot.
Yes, yes, so actually the rain was a little bit refreshing.
Oh, Lou, we got this.
Here we go.
Got the little ones here.
Oh, it's Brown Santa.
So I'd like to take the time to, to recognize you folks. Uh, this is our, this is the whole police department. Kevin, Andrea, and Rick. And, uh, at this time, so I'll read this. This is the formerly recognized and commanded Kevin Everlaw, Andrea Turner, and Rick Sanchez for three years of dedicated and honorable service in the Martindale Police Department. Your continued commitment to public safety, service to the community, and uphold the high standards of law enforcement is deeply appreciated. Your contributions have made a lasting impact on our city, the citizens of Martindale, and its visitors. And so I'd like to recommend, commend each one of these people for their, their three years of service here at Martindale. I got a whole fire club.
Look, Brett, sorry.
Yeah, yeah, look, always laugh. You want to start this one? Better here. So it'll work, it'll work.
Teddy, for the camera.
Teddy, for the camera, okay. We don't, we don't solve it.
No Dr. Pepper, no Dr. Pepper.
Ready? One, two, three.
One, two, three. Let's do this. Why don't we sit in there? One, two. Yeah, get in there to the next one.
Oh, it's okay.
We don't care, you have your hat on. Put your hat on, it's fine. Do it. Wait, let Chief get in there.
One, two. Two.
Well, you have your family in there, take a picture.
That that was. He's still up there.
I will admit something, I do feel safer since y'all are here.
I agree.
Come this way so they're not blocking their time. One, two, three.
Oh, awesome.
So great.
Cute kids there.
Yes.
Is it deceiving? They're quite innocent, right?
We are so proud of y'all, thank you for everything.
We are safe with you guys.
We appreciate you. Put it on the website and here.
The best picture is Kevin as Brown Santa.
Yeah, we'll we'll save that picture for the holiday.
Thank y'all.
Thank y'all.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you very much.
Alright.
You're awesome, City Council. Oh, there she is.
Next. Discussion and action, three point one, motion to approve or deny the contract between the city of Markendale and the Markendale Community Library for fiscal year twenty twenty five. There is a paper copy in front of everybody. That is um as of this afternoon edits. Matthew and I got together and um tried to work out an agreement that would allow us to um have what we needed to have in here, have the library, get what they needed to have in here. Um because it is so late in the year, next talent for fiscal year twenty twenty six. We're gonna start over. Um our attorneys said that they have a few different library contracts that um they've worked with with different cities that are not part of the city, like uh different libraries that are not part of the city that are also nonprofits. So they're gonna give us several example ones that we can look through and look at some of the wording and what kinds of documents they require and how they set things up. And um the library will be invited to look at those as well and see about putting together just a a whole new one from scratch. So uh because of the tight timeline, we didn't wanna try to do that right now before the thirty first of July when everything is due. So if anyone has a motion, we can have a conversation.
Um your two point will be.
What?
Uh you have a city hall updates.
Oh, no, we don't have any word. We're good. Thank you though, I appreciate that.
Uh make a motion to approve this minimum contract.
Second?
I'll second it.
And now we're open for discussion. Does anyone have any comments to make about this version of the agreement or whatever?
Um I know in previous years when we have accepted a contract, I remember one year it was for a three year term. And it was based on monetary amounts, I think that were increasing over the three year period. I I tend to like this on a year to year basis because of the fluctuations that we have recently experienced in our budget in terms of personnel. We we hear from the public, of course, a lot about how we need a city administrator full time. So I feel comfortable awarding the contract for this amount for this year. But this is an exceptional year for us as a city. Because we have no floodplain administrator, no code administrator, no city administrator. And so we need to really as a unity, as a unified council and and city, really need to look at the budget. But based on the people that have resigned, we have not had a chance to really evaluate the budget and how it affects the rest of our fiscal year here. So I'm just bringing those up as topics, but based on what I see the library does for our community and for our public and what they do and what they provide for our citizens, I feel comfortable with awarding this monetary amount at this time. Is there anyone else that would like to provide in further input towards this discussion?
Would the library like to say anything?
Um can you make it public what changes you made on the contract?
Yeah, I think there's extra copies of it over there, but um the changes that were made were um there had been a statement prior, well, first of all. Got it. Um D is new. D uh says provide Markendale with a set of accurate remediated financial statements to include the twenty twenty two tax form nine ninety and profit and loss statement and twenty twenty three tax form nine ninety with profit and loss statement before our fiscal year twenty six budget is finalized, so those later than September fifteenth. Um and I know that you had suggested that there's still some lack of polarity around exactly what that means. So um I can get with Matthew and we'll try to provide a list of exactly what that means.
Okay, not try, I.
We will.
Yeah, no, 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 no.
We will give it.
We will.
We will give you a.
We will. If you're if you're if you're like we talked about, honey, you're willing to have a conversation, I will just show you what I and then.
We have been very willing to.
Yeah, I know you have, I know you have, but I I appreciate that and that's why we're extending the time.
Okay.
And does I don't wanna interfere with the process.
Okay, I I don't wanna be going for a third of one time because.
No, 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 no. No, no, no. No, no, no. I would would not, I would prefer it to just disappear.
Okay. Okay, okay.
Wait, I I have a question, is this supposed to be green, our little speaker here?
Yes.
Yes.
I don't I don't see it green.
Well, we have.
We haven't, we don't have it.
A meeting of that.
Yes, oh, it's there, okay, thank you.
We we have to, we have to start up.
I just just I just wanna make sure.
Everyone, we're gonna gather.
Go in.
Okay, um back on C, the uh the twenty twenty four federal tax return for nine ninety um or nonprofits, the deadline, she's got an extension, the deadline is November fifteenth. Okay, so obviously get it done before then. Do you still want that by September fifteenth?
It says, no, it says December thirty first.
Okay.
Yeah, no, no, we I was, it's the old ones.
Yeah, it's just the old ones.
The old ones.
Get the one that have extension, they have an extension on it now.
Yeah.
The ones that we're talking about September fifteenth are the twenty two and twenty three.
That's all, just the.
That's all, so I understood you had the extension. We 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 had a very good conversation earlier today.
Yes, okay.
To, that was in the discussion.
Okay.
So that would, I knew you had followed any extension.
So on on D, you will make a change on this possibly to say a detailed list?
Yeah, we can do an addendum.
Okay.
Um yeah, and then the only other thing that was different, it's the same as the city's side of the contract was before. But the library had requested a change um that would say that uh for D, no?
D.
For C, that it would be viewed in the library. And um we did take that off just for the sake of getting your um accreditation done. And like I said, we will sit down, read this, make a whole different one and be able to renegotiate those things.
That's one of the nice things about nonprofits, you have to come to our place of business to view our documents.
But um we we would like to take this to our, you know, we cannot do it.
Yes, of course, you need your board to approve it. So um we will vote on that then, I guess.
Does anyone want to? Would you mind if we have a little bit of time to read through this? In case I have any other questions?
I mean, no.
I mean, yes.
No, I don't mind. No, I don't mind if you read through it.
Thank you.
Sure.
So those are the only two?
Mm-hmm, that's, those are the only changes.
And and you'll make the addendum about it detailed.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. I don't want it to be very narrow.
Right.
Okay.
Gotcha. Yes, you all you all have shown very good faith and and you've already refiled a few times. So we will make sure that.
Correct, it's costing us.
The list, yeah, I know, I know, it's been a very expensive accounting year for you.
Mm-hmm.
So we will make sure that you know exactly what needs to be edited.
Okay.
I had a question about D. Let's see, D on the second page, provide access to market as commercial garbage disposal for the disposal of libraries trash.
That was already part of it.
I would also though like like to include in that and to mention recycling and then let's let's not all talk about garbage. Let's talk about recycling and if the library needs to recycle any media of any sort that's paper that you make an attempt to sometimes take the blue, I mean the plastic book covers off the books and perhaps recycle them. Recently, I've seen a lot, not a lot, but several books thrown in the dumpster. And I would like to see them be, I'm just asking you to please recycle your paper and media products as much as possible.
We we try, um and we usually will take to Goodwill and Ashley before uh the former library director would take them home. We take to Green Guide, but it has been so overwhelming for me right now to get things where I need it and moving stuff around. That was just the easiest way, but we are very conscious of being of recycling.
Yes.
We have a recycling inside the library for paper products.
Okay.
This is, it was just, this is a small time.
So that's what we were doing when.
Right. When Ashley was on a military duty, that's what um myself and the volunteers, is we were taking boxes and we were taking to our homes. And yes, we're, yes, we're recycling.
Thank you.
And yeah, it's what I've done before also is just taken home and it's weird. And we have an area just for recycling and I understand.
Good.
This has been a little.
This is a short term.
Yes, okay, good, no, because I'm I'm crazy about recycling and
No, I understand.
And a library does reuse paper.
We know, Stan, we know, but that's what you're thinking, I don't know.
They they are recycling, I appreciate it.
If you if you think about libraries, we are heavy on recycling because we are having people check those books out again and again and again, instead of sitting in somebody's home. Everybody's getting used.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you.
Any other comments, questions, objects concerned? Are we ready to vote? Okay, all in favor of passing the uh library services agreement, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, aye, aye.
Aye.
All again, all opposed, say nay. Okay, then that was three ayes, so the motion passes.
It was four ayes.
It was four ayes and the motion still passes.
And that's with an addendum?
Yep.
Okay. So I didn't.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Thank you. We will get that tomorrow.
Okay.
Excellent, next item. Uh roofing, uh y'all need to know right up front, world Dwayne. We have a giant hole in the roof and it he gets, he gets doused every time it rains. And um some of his equipment has been destroyed because of the rain on his little cubicle. So uh we, he asked us like five times, are you sure you're going to get to that item today? So yes, we are, just for Dwayne and he was supposed to be online, I don't know if he gave up, but.
He was during executive session, let me check that again. Um. Or did you think there was only four ayes?
Yeah, he's he's there, um let me put him in.
Mike said aye. Did you say aye?
Yes.
Mike said unanimous then.
Oh, is it unanimous?
It's not unanimous.
Oh, excellent, then it's it's unanimous, so then all of the ayes have it.
That's what I thought.
I didn't say very loud, I guess I.
Okay, then um please amend our vote to reflect a unanimous vote. Uh okay, so if you scroll down past the library contracts, then you'll get to um three roofing contracts. I mean, three roofing bids, um they're very different. One was um an opportunity just to, I'm sorry, did you wanna say something?
No, just scroll down, see, don't scroll.
Oh, okay. Um one, the first one is from um, I don't know how you pronounce it. Bethec, Bethec?
Beth, Bethke?
Bethke Roofing.
Discuss.
Uh and they were thirteen thousand two hundred and fifteen dollars. Triple A roofing was twenty three thousand and third uh three eighty one. And then North Face was um twenty more than that.
They were over thirty.
Um they, if um Daniel Carl agrees to do the roof on the library, they have a duty to come down if they're gonna do both buildings. They said that they would be able to do, I think it was twenty seven, is that correct? So they'll do twenty seven. Daniel, I talked to him about it and he was supposed to be uh talking to them and get me an answer. I was trying to get the answer before tonight, so we would have. Um but I didn't hear a confirmation, but he said the library's roof is even worse than our roof. One of the things.
Wonderful where the books are.
Right? One of the things that he did want us to please pay attention to is that he's proposing a different roofing system. He said that the um the roofing system he uses, they provide an additional thirteen year warranty on all the materials. He said that the um rolling, the things of whatever you call it, the big long things.
Asphalt, yeah, roofing asphalt. Well, it's not, it's it's not roofing asphalt, it's like a different type of.
It's a barrier.
It's a material, it's a fabric.
It's like a fabric and he, I think he mentioned that it lasts up to twenty years and the other one lasts no more than like eight years.
So how old was this roof, by question?
He didn't tell us that, but he said that there is a hole that comes from the library side.
All of them agreed there was a hole.
There's a hole that comes from the library side and then it feeds into our side and so.
Through the roof, yeah.
Through the hole in the front?
No, no, he said, he said it's somewhere.
Oh, there, yeah, it's like.
So you're you're.
It's like, there's a, there's like a wall, there's a volleyball thing of between the roofs, but underneath it, it goes under inside the roof.
I know, that's where Dorothy was texting a lot of the.
Oh, there you go.
So if the, from what y'all heard from the from the contractor's roofing bid, if the library roof was fixed, would we have a weak problem here?
Yes, yes.
Yes, we still have.
He said ours is is just exhausted, it's worn out, so we have multiple places.
Yeah, nice.
The worst one is because it's combining a straight hole down through our roof over um Dwayne's desk and then more water is coming through the middle of the roof.
So clarify, so that's Carlton's building, Carlton would pay his or his nephew would pay for the roofing, okay?
Would pay for the library.
They would pay for the library.
Yeah, yeah, and then we would pay for ours and then it would be twenty seven.
And get a little discount. Now, I I'm I'm it's, we got these, I got a guy, if you're interested, I got a guy that put two roofs on for me and for Sam. He's really good, so I don't know if you wanna consider him.
Since we, since it's raining on Dwayne every time, we got the three bids, it's probably better to go ahead and just decide among these because I know it's really important to him that we get that roof fixed.
Does it include like gutters or, cause I thought only one of them included gutters.
Yeah, only triple A I saw included gutters.
There you go.
There's your answer.
So would wouldn't that make the bid a lot higher if there's gutters?
He only, he charged five hundred dollars for gutters.
That's it?
Well, there's not much front of that much.
Okay.
That's the only thing, it's not like our house is.
Then we might as well get them.
Is is the square footage about a thousand? What's his total square footage of that? I think I read it.
Hold on, I saw that.
It was it, it was somewhere in the quotes. For both buildings or?
Uh nineteen thousand seven hundred and thirty two square feet.
That couldn't be right, nineteen thousand.
Eighteen hundred.
Nineteen hundred.
For both things?
Nineteen hundred.
Is that for both, that's.
They only looked at our roof.
Yeah, this quote is only for our roof.
So our building is nineteen hundred, so it's nineteen hundred.
Yeah, yeah, there, the library roof is a whole separate bit.
So you're saying. So you're saying twenty-seven thousand for both of the roofs and we would split?
No, I'm saying this bid is for us. And Daniel Carl has a whole separate bid. However, if he decided to do it at the same time and the company is out here doing both of the roofs. They'll discount ours down like three thousand dollars, so it would only turn out to be twenty-seven, not thirty.
Let's make sure that happens.
Yeah.
And then this this is one with the insulation?
Uh huh.
And the other two didn't have did Eric didn't have the insulation?
Right.
So.
He talked to us pretty much.
So do we have any insulation in the attic, is there an attic, we have insulation up there right now?
Right now, there's not.
No insulation at all in the attic?
Well, so if I'm if I'm reading correctly, to triple A, they will do insulation boards, which is a thousand dollars more.
Uh huh.
So that quote is, as it stands, seven thousand six hundred dollars less.
I mean, it's only a thousand dollars more for insulation board.
Okay, so the first vote is very cheap.
Yeah.
Okay, first vote is for.
Here, they're just gonna patch it.
Yeah, I could tell, I could tell that, yeah.
They're just patching.
I could tell it, cause they're charging for every, once they get into how many sheets they change, you know, so I I mean I get that.
Uh huh.
Um the second one has the gutters, which is five hundred dollars.
Uh huh.
Uh they're doing the downstairs, which is important.
And they'll continue using the same material that we have up there now, which is an outdated material that isn't. Recommanded issue anymore because it's so old. So they said, but the problem is with the two roofs is that they're the old material that is like a long, it rolls out.
Yeah.
And um that where the problem, both of them, triple A and this other guy. Both said that the problem is that over time, because it's so hot on the roofs in the summer um and dry. That the sheets are blooded up against each other and that's where you get the cracks and the water starts coming in. So like when the whoever they are, Nor- North Face people, when they were here, they were really sweet. It was like a downpour and Dwayne had already get gotten doused twice. Um and one time his um his electrical stuff caught on fire.
Uh oh.
I know, it was awful, but they went up there to do.
So that's what they're trying to say.
They went um up on the roof and they ended up patching things like without charging us for it. Just so that they were trying to prevent him getting doused again.
So that is the patch?
That's.
No, I don't think so, that's that's already there, okay?
That's been patched.
Yeah. But I mean, that's what it looks like when they patch it.
Uh huh, okay.
The pro- yeah, the problem is is that we're sh- we're sharing the roof and I I've been elaborate, I know y'all have. There's a huge leak in the front.
Uh huh.
On this on our joining wall, I mean it's it's the 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 ceiling, the wood ceiling is moldy.
Uh huh.
I mean, it's it it's bad.
Uh huh.
And right after we had this leak, when Dorothy was, you know, out there get collecting it. The same thing happened over there, you know, I I didn't worry about the right thing, we they need to fix it, he was, it's coming this way.
Uh huh.
They need to fix theirs as much as not more than we need to fix ours.
It's it's gonna be mild or.
Yeah, but.
If we raise a new wire, have we contacted uh uh Carlton's nephew about this?
Right, right. Yeah, I talked on the phone about it and he was supposed to be calling North Face to ask him a couple of questions. And then he was gonna make up his mind, I tried to get him to answer right before our meeting today, but he didn't get back to me. So I can't guarantee whether he's gonna do it, but he seemed very interested in doing it. That's best I can tell you, that's the answer.
Oh, so we don't?
We can't say for sure.
I also think he's in a building tree, I need to contract him or something, so he might be able to help us to find real fits. Should we get his opinion?
Uh huh, uh huh. Yeah, just with as much rain as we've had, I think Dwayne really wants something done.
Oh, we need to.
So.
Well, that's that's that's.
So should we should we think we might want to, is it emergency, I mean, do we want we want to have?
Yes.
The nephew sign on board with us to make sure that we do this every?
Well, we could, maybe what we could do though is say, we will accept this bid as as long as. Daniel Carl agrees to do it also, if not, if he decides not to, we're gonna go with this bid.
So if I mean, if I read it right, we really, do we have a affirmative answer from his nephew, we really. I don't know if we can really make a decision on that, having a partnership, I just, I'm just.
Right, that's what I just said, we can we can say, we will do it this way. And then if he decides against it, we'll go with a different bid.
Let me let me back up and give you what I've read on this little content, okay, so we're we're kind of ignoring the first one just because we know it's patchwork, which is fine. The second with triple A, good and bad, is where I read it, um they're doing gutters, which I think is good. Their fourth line down is repair decking, so right now they're doing a rough estimate. So it's four hundred and fifty dollars, I mean it could go up, okay?
Right, it's sixty bucks a sheet, I think.
Yeah, yeah, it's forty-five, the other one, they both say that to a to an extent. Um so there is, you know, some potential upside that we're responsible for. Um but you're saying they're putting a new synthetic underlayment over the whole thing?
Uh huh.
So does that account as important anymore from a barrier standpoint?
Right.
They're gonna put a a full synthetic layer over the whole thing.
Right, and the way that I explained it to us was that, what we said earlier, we said it the current system right now is outdated. And it's just outdated.
Oh, yeah.
This new this new one is just the top of the line, I guess, or it's just like it's gonna last as he said.
At most twenty years or.
And he said that the company provides like a ten year longer warranty.
On top of the.
On top of the material warranty.
I I just, uh obviously I'm, where we go with this, I mean, this is a huge hit.
Uh huh.
It's a huge hit.
It is, and you can keep patching it and you're gonna keep having to patch it.
So and and we've spent all the other, all the other grant monies already, right? We we have, we you know what I'm talking about, right, we I think we did that last year before there, so we have nothing left in that.
Yep. Right, right, however, Dwayne has said that. He will have to explain it to you, but um he has said that we probably need to spend down our savings. Because we have too much in that investment, is it the investment account that he was talking about?
Emergency fund, maybe?
No, I.
It now it's the investment.
I haven't I believe it's the investment one, I haven't really.
And he was saying, we have up to a hundred and fifty thousand that we probably need to invest in the city. Like not in this city hall, but like in the city. Um and so we'll have to discuss that with him, go ahead.
Also, this last roof leak, it's usually pretty bad in the and by the entrance of the police. But this roof leak hit a equipment that was about three thousand dollars. So it's like we're freaking out over twenty-seven, but how much is it gonna cost us? Um patching it up, you know, a couple thousands. The computer, three thousand, next thing you know, it's gonna be all our records and our records are not, which is.
Yeah, we don't want, we don't want. We gotta reflect, we gotta replace it, it's obvious.
So. It's just.
We just got permanent.
Does it say in the bid, of course, it says to remove all the other asphalt, the old asphalt, rolled roofing and all that.
Yes, remove existing roofing layers of insulation below, that's the the little area recommending.
They go say.
So that's the hot, what's this the what's the what's the middle bit, goes go the.
Twenty-three was the middle one, I believe.
Which which turns out.
Turbo A.
Yeah, Turbo A and the upgrade of the insulation boards a thousand.
Last one. He said he cut down.
And the repair decking would be more, could be more. If he did. There's this one that does have nothing there about repair, I mean, triple. They're replacing just.
Yeah, they're replacing.
Double that.
They were at twenty.
That makes it. Oh, yeah, lead with that place, the insulation over. That's what I want, yeah, cause I get it, I don't like decades that are misplaced. Yeah.
Yeah, because they're going to.
I know, yes.
Cause well, he doesn't say asphalt insulation, I'm not sure you're placing it or not.
Uh huh.
Where's your or, you know.
Yeah.
And then you gotta go look, whereas it's a gallon sold, another is a three thousand dollars, then you know, this is just opens up a can of burn down. It's not.
And we discount it, we pay for it.
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't know that's okay, this is not really related, but this.
Um do you know if the three bids were also given to Daniel?
To the three hundred?
No, because nobody else did it.
Only that one.
They were the only guy that did the two bids and the reason why is because he was climbing around inside the roof.
Agreed.
And he didn't know he crossed over into a new building. So he had already documented it and taken all the pictures and done all this stuff.
They came in while I was there and we basically were showing them, so I didn't know if the other people had.
No, nobody else made that mistake.
No one else went after business actually.
Exactly, I mean, thank you. But I figured since they weren't a public entity, it was fine, they probably did.
We got really excited when they came in.
Right. Uh yeah, who was it, one of the police officers, Kevin, I think. When they finished doing the bid here, he was so impressed, he brought him over to his house. Anyway, so what do we wanna do about this? Anyone? We still got more agenda to cover. Do we do we wanna make a motion, do we wanna table it, do you wanna wait for it just to completely rain more on Dwayne?
I'll bring a car over.
Uh huh, well, I tried to, I actually did, I told I told Donovan to do that.
Don't you wear those umbrella hats?
Sorry, yeah, the fire made me a little anxious when when that happened.
I remember I walked in.
It smelled like rubber, it did, it smelled awful, you know.
Hey, between the two bids, what is the is the insulation board about the same R factor?
I know, we might have.
So if you want to see that one and have.
R factor means how thick it is, right?
Let me see.
It didn't say the R factor.
The R factor, that's part of the.
Insulation, it has a R factor, right?
Probably.
Yes, that is correct, I know that much.
Yeah, the bids aren't exactly the same, like it's they're all different as far as what they provide, so it's hard to tell.
Well, the.
Yeah, it's hard to compare.
The total roof area on the one they're doing a quote on is forty-three hundred square feet. That's for both buildings.
Yeah, but like I said, it's hard to compare, cause it's not exactly the same.
Be honest, we got an answer from this nephew, that would be, but um we tried.
Well, I know his bid, Daniel's bid was lower, cause they have less square footage.
Yeah, Scott, it is a bunch of.
Cause he sent it to me and then I sent it to Daniel. Um but he would be doing all the same roofing things, it's just a smaller square footage. Cause we have both of these sides and he has one.
Which is nineteen hundred square feet, correct, you said approximately.
I think so.
Yeah.
One. Oh, here you are. Uh one and a half.
Same, same, yeah.
Eight eight point six R value is.
Definitely, it's cause this gets hot in here, definitely, that would help for the heat in here, like cooling down. Terry, always get your money back with insulation.
Okay.
Before the week started.
So what are we thinking?
Does the does the bid, the last bid, it's more expensive, does it also have the caveat that if that if they discover additional boards that are thinking to be replaced instantly?
But no, cause they're they're doing all of it.
Oh, they're gonna place all the deck.
Yeah, so the clothes, messes.
Yeah, so.
And if you if you go to the last page of it, it says remove existing roofing layers of insulation below, they're replacing the whole thing.
Uh huh. They're taking back everything else.
The other ones are replacing.
So so the one that's twenty-three doesn't include a thousand dollars of an insulating board.
You can upgrade the insulation to one and a half inch boards, we're not.
That's it for a grand.
And then the 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 decking is not a hundred percent replaced, they're 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 putting four fifty, but it could be more.
So the only one that we have a bid that seems to have a cap to it is the last one, right?
Um fortunately, yes.
Right.
So the I like what I'm, I look at, like if you and I are the same, hey, Maron's like, okay, I'm at twenty-three three here and I wanna upgrade because this system is supposed to be same, so I'm at twenty-four three.
Yep.
And.
These guys.
And then I'm gonna and then I'm gonna maybe have to spend a couple thousand more, so now I'm within spitting distance.
And then exposed.
Cause right now we're at twenty-eight percent difference.
Of the one appears to be the higher quality roof replacement.
And that's replacing. And I mean, I have to default, I mean, they're not here, so I have to default to the staff, you know, making that recognition for a reason.
But just reading through the bid, it's it's to me that this second, the the final one appears to be a higher quality roof product in the.
Well. Of course. Yeah. And the price difference is.
Well, we we were just saying five grand, but we don't know.
It's not.
We're playing decking.
They 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 left and I'm already saying, yeah, when they discover broken decking, they're gonna have.
It's not really comparable.
It could be the whole deck could be shot, which is very. Which is very.
It could.
Very possible.
We could, that's right.
Yeah, so forty-five to sixty dollars uh a sheet times, you know, thousand square feet. And you start getting, you know, you gotta make another thousand to two thousand dollars, so.
They're they're pretty much the same, I mean, in my mind, they're within two thousand dollars.
Yeah, I mean, it's likely, did you?
If you if you believe we're gonna have additional boards that are gonna have to be required, they're.
I would imagine.
And the third one seems to be the higher quality product that would probably last better.
That but at least that's where I'm.
Well, we, I'm I'm leading with you, they need to fix theirs because they're, we're having a problem because we're sharing a wall.
It's gonna continue to screw us up.
We're sharing a wall. Yeah. Oh, we took care, we're on, we're reading, we're not, we're reading for a minute.
Fantastic. I was like, there's a mayor pretend, they'll just keep going.
So it's 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 it seems to me the best outcome for us would be if if uh Daniel Carl would agree to the third bid.
Yeah. Yes. Exactly.
And then we get our cost to twenty-seven and then in my mind, it's a bit greater.
I totally agree, good point.
So then we wanna make one that says we'll do that unless he doesn't and then we won't?
Right. I'm. I agree with you, I would make it s- make it subject to.
I'm okay with that. Right, that's what I mean.
Subject to, yeah, like in your motion.
I don't know how everybody else feels about it.
I'm very agreeable with that, yeah, I I really don't, I don't don't like the fact that we're gonna put a new roof and they're not.
Um. Yeah.
Yeah, cause he goes and patches, he puts a new roof. We're the same bill, we're the same bill. And it comes this way, we're the same, we're we we might have wasted money there, because.
Well, then.
And it's a lot of money.
I will make a motion.
Yeah.
Make a motion there.
I will make a motion that we um accept the bid of. North Face Roofing of subject to Daniel Carl approving.
Accept.
A bid from North Face Roofing to simultaneously replace the roof on the library.
I'll I'll second that.
And give us the lower.
The lower.
And therefore and therefore.
Get the down, we get the discount. The ten percent discount. I will second that.
Thank you, Maron.
All right, then everyone in favor?
Aye.
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 Everyone opposed? Excellent.
Until your ability.
It passes.
Well, I have a opinion, fortunately, I know you, I first hit first, it helped you right now.
Um, okay. Okay, so then where are we?
Let's go.
We are on, moving down to the next business, uh. Uh, oh, the boards and commission rules and assignments. Um so we're just gonna briefly push past this. Um because what we did was we put into your packet. The current ordinances for the various um commissions and boards, which are fabulous, we love them. Um but there's no decorum rules at all. And then in consultation with our attorney, who by the way is kind enough, they provide us such a nice service. Every week, we are will be turning in, FYI for future reference moving forward. We turn in our um agenda by Friday, Thursday, by Thursday, cause we're closed Friday. Then they review it and they let us know if we're doing anything like with the wrong wording or that we shouldn't do or that we're forgetting something. So on this particular item, they did recommend, so we included it in your packet. We don't have any rules, right? So he said it's best to have a resolution if you're gonna impose some new set of rules, right? So the resolution that we have is um the order of business at the council meetings. So if we were, one of our choices is, and you can just think about it, we don't need to vote on it, turn. Um one option is we just simply say we that we're going to modify our current resolution for the council, which is from.
We're talking about that one from two thousand six.
Lola Walker.
Yep.
Um so we we can either just modify that one to say it includes council and the and the boards and commissions. Um and they just, we all use the same one. Or we can do something less formal for the committees and boards and commissions. Um than what we use as the council, and so there's an example that's just a made up pretend example. That is just round rules um that like whatever, so you can look at those. And um we can discuss any questions, comments, thoughts or concerns. But we do have kind of a colored history of um, I don't know, chairs being thrown at directors of commissions and things.
Chairs?
Yeah, and um so we have.
We never threw chairs.
So I I thought we had a bad, but hey, nobody's throwing chairs, isn't that good?
Yes, so um, yeah. At this point, um it's probably a good idea to just have some kind of bumper guards in case. Um and so we can either decide next time. Um that we wanna just tack it onto this or we can make our own that is just particular to the boards and commissions.
Does our legal firm have a lawyer play around this, we can we can choose from?
I don't know. Do you?
Yes. We we, yes, we have the examples, it looks like, but it looks like what you have here in the packet though. We we, yes, we have the examples. It looks like it, but it looks like what you have here in the packet though.
Yes, for council, but we would have to then vote to extend it to the um commissions and boards.
Oh, I see. I see. Is that all we really need here?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Yeah, we would just have to like make a motion to have it apply to everyone and not just council meetings, because right now it's only for council.
Does somebody wanna motion just for discussion purposes?
Sure, no, I don't know. Anyone? Would anyone like to motion so we can have the formal discussion? No one?
I'll make a motion to extend the decorum rules currently acting over to city council to all commissions.
Okay. Excellent.
I'll make that.
Excellent. Would anyone like to discuss that?
Okay, so can I, yeah, so you're telling me that this resolution from two two thousand and six is applicable to us now?
Did we have never canceled it or modified it?
I don't know.
I might be confused with two, see if I read. So right now, thank you, I knew it was in there somewhere. Right now, the ordinance that's currently on the books for the.
Boards.
The boards. They are under meeting procedures.
Mm-hmm.
They're set up to doing the latest edition of Robert's rule of order.
Does that apply to commissions?
Yeah, that applies to all of the three. It's before the actual breakdown.
Oh, so we have something in.
So we do have something.
Okay, then. What I would, what I would like to challenge us to consider is um. Some sort of, yeah, some sort of system of accountability for that, because I don't think throwing chairs or cussing at people
Unfortunately.
or telling people that they're worthless in the middle of a meeting, which I have since being elected in Sebastiana, we have witnessed. So um, yeah, it would be nice if there were was some sort of system in place that's to hold people accountable for those.
But we have a censor mechanism or or I mean, wouldn't we?
Everybody on your boards and commissions board, they're moving, they throw a chair, I mean, that's.
Yeah, just.
Yeah.
You're right.
Certain, sure, what?
So if.
So in a moment, we're on the board altogether.
So so whoever has an example I can pick on, you were at a meeting where something was uh a a conduct unbecoming, correct?
Mm-hmm.
Would that be something that should be reported to council and then we make a similar area?
And then council decides?
It is being adjusted out there. Council, the council points.
Okay.
So that.
So we would say like on the agenda, Bob Smith.
At the next city, the next city council, we would not name someone's name, but.
That's what I'm asking.
But we would say, uh, you know, just, pardon me if I'm way off base, or discussion, possible action, removal of member of XYZ committee due to. Again, it's just a.
Do you want me to add to the set, just remove it on your question?
Yeah. Yeah, for us, yeah, just discussion.
Removal of John Brown?
Just, no, you don't mention the name, discussion of possible, right? You don't you don't call it that.
Then how would you know? How would you know if you were not at the meeting?
I was talking, you don't want to executive session.
Oh, then put it on the agenda. Discussion and possible action to replace it or remove John Doe.
Based based on their behavior.
Yeah, we don't have, no, you don't say that, right? We don't say that in.
No, just say that.
Well, you just say it's on the next agenda item. So if you as the mayor witness something that you're saying is inappropriate.
Mm-hmm.
You actually have a video.
We need to.
Mm-hmm.
Then you let us know and let's find a replacement for that individual if they're gonna act that way.
Okay.
And then just remove them from the.
If they were that. Yeah, 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 actually media, then 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 is and is at the council's discretion, and it's obviously your recommendation.
Okay.
You know.
All right, fine.
There's there's no warning then? I mean, we had it though where a person has done maybe three different things over the course of several years. And it did happen again and again, and perhaps if we would have given a warning to say you weren't acting.
Discussion, possible action.
There you go.
Doesn't mean we have to bring up here. You could make them come, you could make them come and say, okay, you know, John Doe, no loss, don't worry.
Yeah, I think if somebody cusses.
Don't do it again.
Don't do this. Yes, I I would like to see them at least be given a warning first for this.
Well, I mean, if somebody just cusses, that's one thing, but if they throw a chair.
Yeah.
It's not.
But how can you use it as an adult? You should kind of be told not to throw a chair.
No, that's your.
You put, you put top of order, they're out of there.
Yeah.
So yeah, I guess it all depends on the severity of our conduct.
If you throw a chair, that's assault.
I think.
Well, yeah. Let me just say though, the person didn't actually throw a chair.
Okay, well, they did.
He lifted it up and and just maybe lifted it up.
What I'm talking about is specific, let's just go to the general. There are instances that to directions.
Yes, okay, general.
That's right.
There are, there is behavior in a commission in my mind.
Mm-hmm.
In a commission meeting that would warrant an immediate dismissal. I'm not saying this example warrants it.
Absolutely. Mm-hmm.
Right? I don't know the details.
It's not gonna retroactively go to certain council.
Why it's. It is, there's there is behavior and action if committed in a a council meeting or a or a commission meeting that could warrant immediate dismissal.
Yes.
It could be a warning depending upon the upon what what it is.
Then that would be after council to decide to give a warning, is it a dismissal?
It's. Terrible, that's terrible.
I'm sorry, they're they're throwing a chair, that's assault. They're throwing a chair, that's that's what you write the chief in. I mean, if you're assaulted.
I I believe that all that happened at that time, which was last year, um was they were they were asked to step down from being chair of the committee.
No, I've seen some stuff in. I've I've seen some stuff really do that and and we should start to set some rules, some boundaries for people. So I I.
Exactly, there's actually a process for removing the warnings.
Okay. All right.
Uh, we had a motion in a second, we probably should vote it down now since we found out we have already have actions.
I'm in.
And all right, I would I motion that I withdraw now.
Excellent. All right, then, let's move along. And so we don't need to do anything further because we have that they're gonna use Robert's rules and we have in place the procedure for removing somebody from the boarder commission. Okay.
Yeah, Adrian wrote this, it's. It's textbook.
Okay, so then, next thing is we need to um appoint or reappoint people on to said boards and commissions. So um, we have the list of people that have applied. And for the first one on there, it is the uh historic preservation commission. And we do um have numerous open places. I believe there's only one person on that committee present. So if you know anyone, um, we need people to apply for that one.
Who's currently on the commission?
Susan. Susan Trum.
Susan's the only one, Brady Brady's not? He don't wanna do anymore?
Yeah. No.
I want her to see.
She was, but I think it's her terms expired anyway.
Oh, oh, she didn't.
Yeah, the term expires and they don't reapply, then they then we tell they're fired.
Okay.
You won't be able to ask her to apply again?
No, no, she should be able to break, yeah, yeah.
No, 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 I was like, I just wondered if she's still on commission.
I'll I'll ask, I mean, she just wasn't.
She's welcome to.
I mean, it's totally her choice. Uh, people, you know, they go on and then they need a break and whatever.
She works, she works a lot, so.
Oh, yeah. So right now, if you do know anybody, we do have positions positions available on the historic commission. Um, we have two people that did volunteer, um Pat Fowler and Janie Pardis, both submitted volunteer interest applications. I'm excited to tell you as an aside, we did get um an invitation, I mean, a a application for somebody that wanted to be on panel. And so we, I had to write them back and say, we don't, that's just the council, you can't really entertain that one. Um, so.
Direct them to the historical commission.
Yeah, I did. I said, we think about these, how about these?
Historical commission, conservation.
So um you can read through the applications um for Pat Fowler and Jane Pardis and.
The Janine O'Nast Green.
Yes, that is Jane O'Nast Green. And um let us know your feelings and then we can move on to the river commission. Do, um, I don't know whether you want to nominate them independently of each other or just say like we nominate both of them or I don't.
I I'll, I'd like to nominate both Pat Fowler and Jane Pardis to join the historic preservation committee.
I'm sorry.
I'll second that.
Yeah, sorry.
This is fast, I am watching.
All right, anyone in favor? No, any discussion? Anyone in favor?
All in favor.
Yeah.
Say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
All opposed?
Or we're.
Aye.
All right, moving on. Uh, the applicants for the river board are Joy Youngers, Jay Daniel and Nicholas.
Could I could I ask for a slight modification to our process? Could we individually?
Yes.
Help through them if you don't mind.
I don't mind at all.
Okay. Just go.
Um, so uh Joy's application is the first one. I think uh Deanna has these in the same order as they appear on the agenda.
And I'm sorry, interrupt for work. All of these are currently on the board.
Yes, they would be reappointments.
Nobody else is applying, although. For the river.
No, not for the river, of course.
Or for the park.
Or for the park. No, all of the people on the park one are also current people serving and they would like to be reappointed. Um, so in terms of the Martindale River Board, do we have a nomination for Joy Youngers? Anyone? Anyone?
I nominate Joy Youngers.
Excellent, second? I'll second that. And all, oh, discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Anyone opposed? All right, the motion carries. Joy, congratulations. Um, Jay Daniel, anyone? Motion?
I nominate Jay Daniel.
Second?
To the river advisory committee.
Second, second, anyone?
I'll second it.
And all in favor? Oh, wait, conversation, discussion?
Um, I forgot about, so now they're in the either in the ETJ or the city, and that still still stands.
Right.
Yes, that's that's what I thought. Okay, that's all I wanna ask.
Anybody else? Thoughts, comments, questions, concerns? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
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 All opposed? Right, I'll say aye. You're what you're saying you're opposed? No, you're saying you're a favorite. All right, then, he is on the committee. Congratulations, Jay. Uh, next is Nicholas Styler. Styler and uh anybody wanna make a motion about Nick?
Somebody make a motion for Nick. Oh, I'll make a motion to nominate Nick or appoint Nick to the river advisory board. All right?
I'll second.
And any conversation, discussion, thoughts? All right, hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed? All right, congratulations, Nicholas. Next, Jeff Latimer for the um for Parks Commission.
Commission here, I'm just kidding.
For the Parks Commission Advisory Board. Advisory for the Parks Advisory Board.
I'll nominate Jeff Latimer.
Second?
I'll second it.
Anyone have any conversation?
We're curious. I'm just gonna say that. I think everybody knows that. I hope.
Anyone want to discuss that further?
I mean, I haven't been to the meeting, so I would imagine I have seen him at other meetings. Um, so.
He gets a little emotional sometimes, but he does, he's not a lot. You know, he's.
Well, he's he he gets passionate. He gets very passionate. Sometimes it's.
Directly aimed at other people.
Not well, not well directed. Yeah, I I I'm on the same uh process as you are. I've had conversations with him privately. Um, and he means well, he's just, he can't be a dictator one time. Uh, his his direction of.
That's Jeff.
That's his direction of his uh. He he means well, but his direction.
Yeah, he does, he means well.
He means it's not always a positive, he means a positive methodology, yes.
And so what do we say about that as the council appointing the members of our committees? Is that fine? Are we okay with that?
Not really.
So.
But he's done, he's done, he's done a lot of things.
Yeah, I mean, I like the guy.
He's done some thing. He's bow bowed and picked up trash and he's a, you know, he he's a good volunteer, so.
Mm-hmm. And he can contribute volunteers on or off of a commission.
I think he has more, he has more. Yeah, he has more po, he has more positive than it is in my opinion.
Okay.
Even if let me call me a dictator, so I'll let it go.
Any other you did put a question?
I didn't tell you any other questions.
I should tell you.
Yes, Deanna.
She didn't make two of his own.
What?
She didn't make two of his own uh board members upset their last week.
He did or did not?
Did.
Did. And they're only five, four of them. They're only four.
Yeah, he does a lot of name calling. He then apologizes if that is okay.
Please secretary and I have a brief minutes for your. Well, many name calling things happening here also. It's not gonna be how many were common on board.
True.
On occasion.
All right, anybody else have any comments for discussion? And all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
No.
Aye.
All right, then, the motion carries. Congratulations, Jeff. Angela, Angela Jimenez. Uh, for the Parks Commission, Park Committee Advisory Board.
Advisory Board.
Advisory Board. For the Parks Advisory Board, uh, anyone wanna make a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve Angela Jimenez for the Park Advisory Board.
Second?
I'll second that.
Any conversation or discussion?
I think she's great. I hope she'll be a great member of the board.
And any others?
That's a mission.
All right.
All right, let's group, let him recruit Ramon, which is the fourth member of the board.
Yeah, and he's a very good contributor, awesome. He's very, he was a number one, very, invited very nicely, I've never too, it's very interesting.
All right, then, um motion, I mean, so all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Wow, all opposed? All right, then, congratulations, Angela. Cory.
I'll make a motion to approve Cory for the Park Advisory Board.
I'll second that.
All right, and uh anyone have any conversation or discussion?
I'm just, I'm staying because I don't know Cory. I bet everybody else is posting a lot of that.
Anyone comments?
Right across the street.
Right across the street.
Have we ever done these Zoom meetings with him?
Maybe his son, you're sure.
Oh, that's my new son.
Yeah, that's the track.
Or maybe so.
Yeah.
You know, man, you have to do something.
No, no, Deanna, were you gonna say something about?
Have have we or we can do Zoom meetings with him then if he's away in in Alaska or something? I I don't know if we have done that as of yet.
I don't think, uh, I don't think we have. I think he's been here whenever they have meetings.
Yeah, he doesn't. He doesn't.
What?
He doesn't have a best service in Alaska, so no.
That's right.
That's always an option, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
He'll miss, he'll miss on that. He's pretty good, has he? He's pretty good.
They'll just need a board.
He's been most of the meetings. Has he? He's been most of the.
All right, ready to vote?
Bring it up.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, Cory, you're in, buddy. Lucky you. Uh, are we, is this the last thing? Please say yes.
I'll say yes if it means anything.
Yes, it is the last thing. Woo-hoo! So there has been a lot of talk lately about flooding, obviously, and it is very important. Um, due to some very nice advocating on the behalf of our community members. Uh, we hope to have our sirens repaired on Saturday. Keep your fingers crossed.
Oh, sure.
Keep your toes crossed. I will be the first to let everybody know as soon as we find out that they have been tested in our in working order. If not, they will have been um serviced by the company representative who will um let us know what they need to order in order to get them working. But they they seem to feel like the batteries are good, everything should be good. It should just be a matter of reprogramming them to get them onto the road.
Because, you know, we're all aware that that we barely missed that flood. We were very fortunate. That could have been us for it.
Yeah.
That's life threatening. That siren needs to work, so be ready.
Yeah.
I have another question.
So we'll know because we should be able to hear it. It's right. It should all be later.
And. Yeah, I heard, right, somebody posted on Facebook and I was just wondering that the sirens, are they audible throughout the city limits? So.
Mm, that's a good.
They have not worked in so many years that I have no idea. I mean, so like somebody.
There's two words. They haven't been tested in a while. There's two of them. There's one uh down.
down towards uh, Canaline Lane and there's one right here on this tower.
In the river, yeah.
Okay.
So uh, both of them, and it should be pretty loud. You should be able to hear throughout the city. Uh, we have, we have some other plans too if, if that don't work for, for the interim.
Right. No, 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 we're on top of it. Then if somebody had mentioned that, I was like, oh my gosh, I didn't think about because it's prolonged.
So.
Turns out.
So chief, question, sir. I, I did talk, I said, so you're, you could operate, you, you could activate the siren. Nectar, Hector can, can activate it and uh.
So we, uh, let's, let's hold off until after we meet the guy on Saturday and, and figure out what's going on. And then we'll, I'll answer that question at another time.
So I mean, that's, that's my, my main concern is if we have a flood event, make sure somebody is there to activate.
We were prepared uh, this weekend if something were to happen, we were prepared all weekend long just to uh, to do what we needed to do. Reverse nine one ones. There's other, there's other methods. Reverse nine one one, door to door, whatever.
Is, is the siren only for floods or is it for tornadoes or other events?
Good question. I don't know. I'm gonna answer it. Or no?
Yes.
So the way that's, this system is set up is it's remote setup with a, a radio, a handheld radio. So we can use it for whatever we want to use it for. However, uh, we want to make sure that we use it so that someone will know what to do. I don't want to set it off if you run outside and it's a flood or it's a tornado or whatever. So we got to figure out something and we'll discuss those things of when it's gonna be used and.
Well, is there?
To use it.
So.
Is there a different frequent or is that a bit too complicated?
That's too complicated, but what we have talked about doing, and it might still be complicated, is that um, Caldwell County has like a this is the one for tornado and this is what we do for this and this is, and there's three.
Right. Okay.
And so we were talking about the fact that like people move around a lot within the county.
Mm-hmm.
So probably it makes sense to use the same thing countywide. That way, no matter who it is, you get used to the same thing.
Yes.
But like you said, well, we need to wait and talk about all of that once we get it.
So, real hate to keep questioning chief, but, or, I mean, so this is gonna be an inter, inter like with the county, with other folks with the fire department. I mean, there's, they're gonna be an integrated communication?
So we've been talking with Hector from uh, emergency management and we're gonna be the same as the, the county. We'll work the same.
Hey. Okay.
Now they have different areas that they need to work with as well. They have Dell and they have other areas that may flood differently than what we're getting over here.
So I guess I'll be the devil's advocate. Say, you're, you're out here. I mean, was there, is there a system to make sure that that alarm does go off?
Yeah. You made our whole PD, so we, we, I'll make sure that someone is available to set that off. If not Hector, myself, or the dispatch.
Should we?
I wanted to ask, so I know y'all were just getting this set up, but then came there, we implemented some kind of testing also on the other, we monthly do that.
They should, yes.
Monthly tests, yes.
Yeah.
So I just, I mean, maybe, maybe I was speaking out of term, but I mean, to me, the more the merrier, the more people that can activate that siren, I mean, because you know, this thing could come in two o'clock in the morning.
Well, so we'll.
Okay, we're gonna wait and talk about that once we get it working.
Yeah.
So we'll, we'll get back. We promise you, we will have a plan for that. I get it, it's really important and we want to have absolutely a lot of people that can take over and, and know what the plan is and how to make it work. But we're just getting a setup, so we don't have the answer yet to.
Yeah. No. Training on the FEMA training in the second meeting, I saw that, so we'll, I'm assuming that'll be covered later.
That's right. Yes, and Hector also said that the council is supposed to, which we didn't know. Uh, we're supposed to have been required to do a couple of FEMA trainings every year.
I've seen that.
So we are gonna learn about that too. Um, yeah, so I will get back to us on that. Um, meanwhile, this though is about, um, we need to have a workshop for anybody that is interested in the city about, about flooding. There's two different things going on right now. One is this, um, it's in the packet. Uh, can you just put that down, Deanna, to the um, the flood? The, what is it, fact sheet for the combined river basin flood study? Um, it is, um, it's being funded by GLO and CatCog. And they are doing some really amazing work. In fact, I will put on the website, they did an hour long training um, a couple of weeks ago. And I tried to post it on the Facebook page and they wouldn't let me, got knocked out by the moderators. Um, they have set up a whole thing, just like every town in Caldwell County, including Martindale, the little tiny town of Martindale. You can sign up for specific emergency alerts for Martindale. And I don't know why Facebook was like, we don't know if that's real, so we're not gonna post that. But it is real and it's from the GLO and CatCog, so it's reputable. Um, so I will try to get it back out and I'll put it on the website. Meanwhile, one of the really interesting studies they're doing, it just happens to be focusing on Martindale um, as a key intervention point. They were talking about how when we get those hundred year floods, we, um, it's right where um, the two, the San Marcos and
Like.
Yes.
merge that create the massive problem of flooding. So what they're doing is studying it and coming up with, how can we actually prepare for the hundred year flood? Not the ten year, not the twenty, which is kind of what we've been getting, I don't know, all kinds of ideas about in Martindale lately. These guys are like the really big thinkers from UT and from Texas A&amp;M. Um, the scientists that are saying, we can do all of this really amazing, powerful computer monitor modeling of what if we did this major thing to try to absorb that water? For example, they gave me five different strategies they could use. One of them, and they would all be located right around where the two rivers intersect. Um, and kind of between around one ten, uh, where one ten goes through. Um, but one idea was levees, one idea um, was a giant enormous retention pond with all this stuff set up where when the water like actually, I can't explain it all. I have all of it though. They sent it to me. Because they said, like, this is really expensive stuff and for the next, we're twenty-five percent through, we come up with five options. One of them is just simply we buy out everybody in the highest risk places and make them move off the river. I said that had been just miraculously unsuccessful in the past.
Yeah, I can imagine.
So, um.
No, describe.
So they were like, what, what do you think, what, what would y'all want us to focus on out of these five? And I was like, I can't answer that for the city. Like, I think the city has to answer that for the city. The residents have to have input to that. So I told them, I absolutely want to be able to give them feedback, but I need to be able to have our people talk about it and look at what are the different models and how would that work and what ones have which, you know, benefits or risks or whatever. At the same time, the second one that we listed in here, there's a website listed, a link to a website listed for um, the county is also doing their FEMA funding. And so any FEMA projects that we want to do for flood mitigation, we have to give, get into this massive, it's like an eight hundred page document when it's done. Um, and then during the next five years, as we want to do work like on the river, um, where we've got all the erosion happening all the way down, um, we can propose projects that will remediate those areas and they will fund them because they're in our five year plan. So we also need feedback from the city and the parks and the rivers committees and, you know, people. We need people to look at all of those things and bring those ideas together. So I figured if we just do one giant flood day, I mean, not literally, we can um, talk about here's all the options that these people are doing for like a massive flood and what do we want to put forward? What do we want to tell them we like or don't like? And then what about, what projects do we know in the near next five year cycle that we need to address like erosion? So um, I want to do a workshop. I just found out from our um, attorney that's probably never gonna come back because this meeting was so long. Um, that I thought, my understanding, and this was just me, I get information from nowhere sometimes, that when we had workshops, council could come if they want to, but they don't have to. Uh, like it's not required, especially if we have like a workshop and um, a council meeting, then sometimes people would come or not come to the workshop and then come to the council meeting. But he was saying, no, we have to have um, all of the council at a workshop because those issues are likely to be issues that eventually council will have to vote on. So if they're being, we're soliciting feedback from the community and we are um, then perhaps going to give that feedback like to this river basin flood study people or FEMA or whoever. Then those are things that the council will vote on to, yes, move forward if these recommendations are not. I didn't realize people have to be at them. So um, that's why it's on here as a thing for us to.
So do we have to have a forum or do we have to have a super forum?
It's gone. No, no.
But I mean, you, I mean, that makes sense.
He said it was the four out of five one, the super forum.
Super forum, that makes sense. Okay, I just, that's why, I figured that was not a running thing, but just want to clarify.
Yes. Yes. Yes.
So do we, yeah, do you, or he's gonna get to that question, do we have a recommended date?
No.
Okay.
Because I didn't want to try to commit people. So, yeah.
So we'll work on, we'll work on that next.
Ta-da!
Yeah, I know, I like that. I like that, I do.
Right, we're gonna, we have to add the budget dates to this and then the next time each committee meets, I'm gonna ask them as they come, they've already got a color assigned. But as they come up with additional things that they want to work on, um, so they should put those on there too. That way, no matter who's meeting in here, everyone can look and see when the room is busy, what deadlines the city has coming up, et cetera, and so on.
That's a good plan. Good job.
So. Um, so we will work on a date as long as it's acceptable of a topic for, I mean, if that's something people are willing to come and do as a workshop, yes, no?
Uh, council totally believe that's gonna go viral.
I've been, I've been at a meeting in Caldwell County, we're like for presentation.
Yes, yes.
Yeah, we went with Catherine.
Mm-hmm.
I went there with you.
Five months ago on the kickoff. And yeah, they will basically write or have them, have their mitigation plan for free, it's included in the grant.
Mm-hmm. Mm-hmm.
And that was, when you're saying, you know, pick a couple of things that you want to, you know, resolve or have a plan to, you know.
To attack.
Attack, acquiring land, you know, wha- whatever it is, then, then, there's, that's the way you get the money.
Mm-hmm. Yeah.
Got to have the plan, so.
Yeah, yeah. And last year when council had a meeting with, what was there? Ed Chirio and their grant writer, and somebody else, another commissioner.
Yeah, and that was. That was. No, it wasn't a commissioner, it was the gal that does their um G, GIS stuff, the, the.
No, not that lady, not that one. A different, a different day.
Yeah, I know.
We had two commissioners and their grant writer and they were all here.
Oh, no, it's hobby.
Yes, that's what it was. It was hobby.
It's hobby.
And they were telling us, don't be afraid to make a large budget for those projects.
Yeah, I remember now, you're right.
So um, yeah, we need to really get feedback from people on, like, this is our chance to actually do stuff to positively impact and support our river and surrounding areas. So we want to make sure we get feedback. All right then, if everyone's okay with that, do we need a motion?
No, because we're not taking the.
Because we don't have a date.
Yeah.
Okay, well, next week time we meet, I'll bring back a date, a couple of dates and even. Um, do you have any feedback about dates? Weekend, weekday?
I'm defaulting your schedule because you're working.
I think it'd be good to do it like before, I mean, is it, tell them to do it before council meeting, like at four thirty? Or is that not?
Yeah, because then we have to be here for like twelve hours and people don't come because they're tired.
Well, then do it like on a, I guess do it on a Monday. A Monday would work best for me. It could just be, it can either be like morning or it could be like four thirty, because I can either, I can either go in a little late or I can come early.
Let's do it more like four thirty because then people, I mean, we have to work, throw the money to it, right?
Yeah, if you want to do it at six thirty, I'm fine with that too. Because then it would definitely be after work, so I'm probably doing six thirty too.
Okay. Well, let's find a day. I'll bring back a date to the next meeting and y'all can vote on. Thank you, thank you, thank you. Okay. Any um, options for um, future agenda items?
You have three seats.
You don't want one? Uh, no, I don't want any.
Yeah.
What is it? Oh, that's right, it's just a piece of paper. Um, um, it's, yeah, no, it's really fast, super fast. All it is, is just adding Maury onto being able to sign checks and um.
I'll make a motion to add Maury to.
Yeah.
I'll second that.
Yeah, everybody's name are still on there. It took off very, I think.
I think it almost.
But um. Go to your.
Stay.
There you go. But it's done, it's done. I, we just have to say, okay, anyone in favor?
Oh, you did.
Make a motion.
No, you don't have to do a motion. It's now, is it, well, you don't have to motion it?
I don't know. Yeah, yeah, because it's a resolution.
Okay.
It's called a resolution.
Motion to house.
Textbook resolution, amending authorized representatives.
I'm in, I'll make a motion to now you got me else pulled up on it. Make a motion to amend uh, the authorized representative for the textbook. Um.
Thing.
Thing, yeah, thing.
All right, amen. Anyone have a motion representative?
Yeah.
Does anyone want to second that?
I'll second it.
Excellent. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? All right, we're done. Maury, you can sign checks.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Wait, I, I just have one quick question about future agenda items, so is, are, are we having a meeting on the fifteenth of July?
Done. Yes.
No, we're not, right?
Planning is done?
No, we're not.
Oh, no, no.
We're not gonna have it.
My bad, I thought y'all were talking about batteries, so it didn't count. No, uh, engineer, engineers have gone back to me and with our new uh, law firm, they have a planning team that I want to utilize for this. And so I just sent them that SUP along with the engineer questions.
Because they, they added a lot to that, a lot.
I don't really want.
I know, we don't get into it, but.
Yeah, deep into it, but.
All right.
No meeting.
So no meeting on the fifteenth. Thank you for asking.
One other quick, quick, I'm sorry, because I have future things, but
Okay.
when are we gonna start to talk about the budget? Is it gonna be a workshop? Is it gonna be a meeting?
We have the whole calendar. If you come back tomorrow, I'll have it up here on the wall.
Yeah. Yes.
Um, but I'll also, I'm happy to post it on the website. It doesn't start till the twenty fifth, right?
Yeah, so on the twenty fifth is when we get uh, certified tax appraisal stuff from the county. Not to get really deep into it, but the, on our calendar, we have sounds alarming, but it's not, and I'm working on it to say the least, but on the calendar, we have it as August seventh to, for city council to accept the proposed budget.
Hmm.
In that calendar, I have some leeway. I think I put it to like a week, a week or two for the city. I have some leeway to get, meet the other deadlines that follow after that.
Hmm.
In the end, the city has to accept the budget by September twenty. But I, no, it's mid-September, I was gonna say. I need to look, I need to look at it, but like, that kind of has to be published on the website.
Yeah.
That is required, so once they get it, they, it'll be there.
Yeah.
And once, yeah, working on it. Sorry, it's just been a little hectic with.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
No, we have.
And Jared is still, we're able to call him and he's helping us.
Yes, Jared.
Oh, really?
Doing a number of things, so.
Oh, that's cool.
I've been, I've been in contact with Jared.
Oh, that's cool. It's not something to do.
Yeah. Yeah, very nice, very nice.
Did, and just a future, did Jared ever forward you like a heritage tree ordinance that he was working?
Yes.
I, I, yeah, we also have access to Jared's stuff, so.
Yes. Yeah. So we can put that on. Would you like us to put that on?
Yeah, yeah.
Gotcha.
Thank you.
We'll do it.
Okay, thank you.
All right, now.
Terry.
Do it.
I'll make a motion to adjourn at nine forty A P M.
Whoa, boy. All in favor?
Aye.